Good morning. I am absolutely delighted to be here with you today. I have been on the Board of Trustees for three years now here at Elizabethtown College, and one of my greatest pleasures is in having the opportunity to interact with students. So I really am very pleased to be with you, and I hope that we can make this somewhat of an interactive conversation because I'd love to hear what's on your mind today. Thank you very much, Dr. Williams, for inviting me to participate in the lecture series. I'm honored to be here. I understand that many of you or most of you are business students or interested in business. Is that right? I see some nods of the head here. So right at the outset, I will confess that when I was in college, I didn't have my sights set on a career in business. Not even when I graduated from college did I have my sights set on business. So I admire you at this point in your lives for having some idea of what you want to do and where you want to go career-wise. I came into business in a somewhat unconventional way. I started out in college as a music major, but I always had a keen interest in the law. So when I graduated from college, I went directly into law school. In law school, I took the normal courses, including contracts and corporation law and business law. And they were very interesting. I enjoyed it, but I still didn't have like a focus on business. When I graduated from law school, my first job out of law school was as Assistant Attorney General in what was then the Pennsylvania Department of Justice. Now it's the Pennsylvania Office of Attorney General. And I stayed in state government for several years, working in various state agencies. And that's where I was exposed to business, but I was exposed to business from a regulatory lens, and I really liked it. I liked that combination of law and business. It really gelled for me. Unfortunately, after spending several years in state government and not only in legal departments, but also leading to legal departments for state agencies of Pennsylvania, I landed a job at American Water, which I'll explain American Water to you, you know, what we do or what they do in a few minutes. But through working as a corporate attorney, I was able to combine that interest in law and the interest in business in a career that spanned many, many years, 30 years as a matter of fact, in law and business. Just an aside, American Water, as Dr. Williams said, is the largest investor-owned water and wastewater utility in the country. Serves over 15 million people in 47 states plus Canada. Total assets $18 billion. Revenues $3 billion. Operating income $1 billion. And net income in the $500 million range. So that gives you an idea of the size and the scope of the company. So it really was my career home for most of my career. I was lucky to find an area which combined two passions for me. And I guess my initial message to you is even if you're not sure what you want to do or where you want to go career-wise, just listening and finding your passion. For me, it led to a career that, in retrospect, was more fascinating, fulfilling, and rewarding than I ever dreamed possible, and certainly my journey surprised me more than anyone else. I think I need this clicker over here to advance my slides. So I'm often asked, what is it that I know now that I wish I'd known when I started out? And there's lots. There's just lots. There's lots about the fundamentals of business and the mechanics of business that I wish I'd known when I first started out. But I put some of the major areas that I had to learn and I wish I'd been sort of attuned to early on. And you'll notice at the top of that list is finance. As a lawyer, I never expected to spend so much time in finance, and I never expected that I'd have to know so much about it to be successful in my career. And I'm not just talking about, do you understand how to read a financial statement? I'm talking about, do you understand what financial statements are telling you about the health and vitality of your business? To be somewhat provocative, I will say to you that if you don't understand how your business makes money, you're going to be of limited value to your business. I spent as much time in conversation about budgets and business plans and strategic planning as I did in cases and courtrooms. No matter what area you land in in a business career, learn finance. The other area that I learned trial and error is the dynamics of organizational change. The old saying, nothing is constant but change. In business, it's true. Nothing is constant except for change. And understanding how change impacts the organization and how to be a part of that change is, again, invaluable. When I joined American Water, it was a publicly traded company, but a majority of the stock was family-owned. And it had been that way for years and years and years and years and years, and you know, everybody was sort of comfortable with that. And then in 2001, the family decided it was going to sell the business and sold the stock to RWE, which is an international energy conglomerate. And all of a sudden, we went from being sort of a family-owned American business to part of a German-based energy conglomerate privately owned. 2001 to 2008. 2008, RWE decided to divest its shares in American Water. And at that time, it was the largest IPO in U.S. history. And we were then a, then became a publicly traded company on the U.S. Stock Exchange in an era of post-Sarbanes-Oxley. So very different from when it was originally, for the most part, family-owned, publicly traded. That's organizational change. Now, I handled a lot of the legal issues around those transactions. We do business in, as I said, 48 states and 47 states, and in many of those states regulated by the Public Utility Commissions in those states. We had to get permission both from an acquisition standpoint and a divestiture standpoint. So I handled a lot of those regulatory issues, putting my attorney hat on. But oh my, were there also those organizational issues. First of all, you know, at that time, when RWE acquired us, people were fearful. What's going to happen to me? What's going to happen to my job? And everybody, you know, in management, had to reapply for their jobs. So there was lots of organizational shifting going on, both at the time of the acquisition and the divestiture. So being a part of an organization that, any organization, will undergo change, and you don't know when to expect it, but it happens. And either with your own teams preparing them for change or your peer teams within the organization, eventually it's something that as professionals in business, you will experience. Big picture thinking. What do I mean by that? You've heard of strategic planning. In order to be a part of strategic planning, I had to make sure that I shifted from, you know, my head down in the papers in front of me and looking at the landscape of my business, the industry, and how to think, I'm not going to use the cliche "out of the box" because some of it's in the box, but how to think about the future in a way that is looking at trends and capabilities. So big picture thinking. Talent management. Recruiting, retaining, encouraging talent within the organization. So not only managing your own team, but also being a part of recruiting and retaining and managing talent within the entire organization. And then these last two are really critical. Communications and crisis management. Communications, both internal and external, and how to manage a crisis when it comes. And believe me, the crisis can come in very unexpected ways. Not too long ago, in our West Virginia operations of the water company, came in Monday morning, phone was ringing off the hook, a chemical spill had occurred outside of Charleston, and it made the national news. I was expecting to have the usual day of meetings and writing memos, et cetera, and it ended up being a day in which the national media, the regulators, the customers were all focused on the crisis that was occurring. Somewhat of a, yeah, you have to learn by doing or being in the middle of it, but just understanding that crisis management is a part of every business, maybe not to the extent that we experienced in this situation. But how do you start to get experience and exposed to all these things as you embark upon your business careers? Are there opportunities in whatever you're doing, whether your student organizations or your summer jobs or your internships, et cetera? If you have the opportunity to be exposed to the finance, be exposed to what your business is doing in terms of organizational management or change management, understanding the communication lines that your business has, those are all skills and experiences that I highly recommend whenever you have the opportunity to learn or get exposed to, that you do. Because I found that these were the areas of business that I spent a lot of time with and had to learn by doing. Any questions on that before I go on? Okay, it's going to be a quiet bunch today, but. In addition to those mechanics and the business, what I call the business fundamentals, I think this is equally important. What I call grit, some people call persistence or perseverance or resiliency. And it's not something that you necessarily learn in the classroom or the lecture hall, but it's absolutely essential to be in business. And this is where the story of Milton Hershey comes in and why I think Milton Hershey's life in business and in his own life is so relevant to business. He really got it. He understood that in order to be successful in business, you need grit, you need perseverance. Just like in life, in order to be successful, you need that resilience. So that's where I really want to focus our conversation this morning. What does grit, resilience, persistence, perseverance? What does that mean? Where do you get it from? How do you develop it? How do you take the example of others and use it yourself to help you in life and in And I'm going to start in what you might think is an unlikely place for a conversation on business, but it's someplace that was near and dear to Mr. Hershey's heart and is near and dear to me. So hold on. Oops. There. Okay. Well, the only thing I'm missing is the mouse, but let me see if I can get it here.
Sometimes, even in the most perfect conditions, the most talented athlete
Soccer, he's good at running, have good hand-eye coordination.
Has to deal with challenges.
It's huge to be able to get over something because of the fact that it's going to happen over and over again. Nobody's perfect, and the game of soccer is so quick that you need to be able to just adjust from one thing to another.
Built from Hershey School Junior, Amanda Dayton has dealt with hardships on and off the soccer field.
As a child, I was exposed to the drugs, the alcohol, the abuse, everything that a child doesn't really need to be a part of, and I learned like
It would force Amanda and her siblings to move in with foster families until Amanda was accepted at MHS. But just one month after Amanda was at the school, her foster parents would both die within one month of each other.
I struggled with wanting to leave and go home, and then I kind of had to think about things a lot more and know that my foster parents wanted me to be here and wanted me to be successful. And so it kind of pushed me to do my best here and to like keep pushing forward.
She kept persevering in the game of life and is now thriving as an honor roll student, SGA member, and junior chapel leader.
It's really hard to stay positive sometimes, and sometimes it just feels like everything is falling apart, but you always have to dig really deep and find a positive for everything and just figure out that like, you know, it's going to be okay. And if it's not okay right now, then it's not the end. Like it will be okay eventually.
There are over 2,000 students enrolled at Milton Hershey School. And each one of them has a story like Amanda's story. Each, for each one of them, life has thrown obstacles in their way at a very young age. For all of them, poverty is one of those obstacles. In Amanda's case, her family also struggled with issues of drugs and alcohol, abuse, and eventually the death of her foster parents. But Amanda didn't let those things, those obstacles, define her. She came to Milton Hershey School in the fifth grade, and she learned grit and persistence and resiliency. And she found that inner strength to face those challenges. So what does Amanda have in common with the businessman, Milton Hershey? Certainly, starting out poor in life. Milton, I always call him Mr. Hershey, so it's really hard for me to say Milton. But Milton, just a little history, was born in 1857 in a stone farmhouse on what is currently the campus of Milton Hershey School in Dairy Church, which is now Hershey. Only surviving child of Fanny and Henry Hershey. And as I say, they were poor. At an early age, Milton's father wanted to make sure that his son learned a trade. So he apprenticed him to a printer, a local printer. Milton wasn't well-suited to that, so it didn't work out very well. And as I'm reciting this, just keep track of how many times I say it didn't work out well or he failed, because I think that's instructive to the story. So printing didn't work well. So his mother took over his education and apprenticed Milton to a confectioner in Lancaster. And by the time Milton was 18 years old, he started a business, a candy-making business in Philadelphia. And he worked hard at it for six years, and then it failed. So at the time, his father was one of these entrepreneurial types. He was more of an adventurer, really. And his father was out in Colorado silver mining. So Milton went out to Colorado and tried his hand at silver mining with his dad, Henry Hershey. Needless to say, that didn't work out either, and that venture fell through. But while he was out in Denver, Milton landed a job in a candy company, and he learned to make caramel. So not to be deterred, Milton, after he learned all this candy-making, returned to, went to New York City and tried his hand. That didn't work either. Not to be deterred, he then went to Lancaster, opened the Lancaster Caramel Company, and the rest is history. The Lancaster Caramel Company was a success. Milton was able to buy chocolate-making equipment. And in 1900, he sold the Lancaster Caramel Company for, how much do you want to guess? Anybody have a guess? How much caramel, this little caramel company in Lancaster brought him in 1900?
A million dollars.
A million dollars, yes. A million dollars. Can you imagine in the year 1900? Milton decided that chocolate was going to be the next great thing, sold his caramel business, and started constructing what was to be the largest chocolate factory in the world in Hershey. What was to become Hershey. It wasn't Hershey at the time. So, you know, I talked a lot about failures and bouncing back, not letting failure deter, failure in business deter. This is a quote from Mr. Hershey later in life reflecting upon those years. He said, "I failed. It was a bad beginning. I suppose I never would have done anything if I hadn't kept coming back." Milton was almost 40 years old when he finally succeeded at business. Look at the entities that resulted from his success. The Hershey Chocolate Company, which is now The Hershey Company, the Hershey Trust Company, which I chair and which is the trustee for his philanthropy. Hershey Park. Has anybody been to Hershey Park? Yeah, right. Part of the benefits of his success. Hershey Industrial School is now the Milton Hershey School, and Hershey Estates, now Hershey Entertainment and Resorts. That's the Hotel Hershey, the Lodge and Convention Center, Hershey Park, the Giant Center, the arena. All of that flowed from his success, but his successes came only after he bounced back from failure. So his failures told him a lot. And the purpose of my, you know, telling you this is not to encourage failure, but it's to encourage grit, perseverance, persistence, and resiliency, and to impart that we all need that in business and in life at some point. And to impart that we all need that in business and in life at some point. When Mr. Hershey was successful and thought about where he wanted to establish his chocolate company, he went back to Dairy Church. He went back to where he was born, where it all started. And that's where he decided to build his chocolate company. And along with that, he had, in his earliest plans, the plans for a model city around his business. Thinking about the workers and their families as being a part of his vision. He built banks and schools and parks, the zoo, golf courses. All that was part of Mr. Hershey's vision of a model city. And when the Depression came, in order to keep the workers in jobs, he built the Hotel Hershey and the community building and the theater and the arena. All of this tied in to business success. Business success that required grit and business success that led him to create opportunities in his community. And perhaps his greatest philanthropy is the Milton Hershey School. So Milton and his wife Kitty were unable to have children. And he often said it was Kitty's idea to found a home and a school for, at the time it was orphaned, boys. And the idea was to create a home life in addition to a school where you teach life lessons as well as education and trade. Today, the Milton Hershey School is thriving. We do have over 2,000 students. And the home life and the education are integral, are intricately linked. I'll get that right. And their idea was that the Milton Hershey School would be here for a long time, would outlast them, and in fact, they put in their deed of trust that it would last in perpetuity. So, at the time, this is, this is just 1909, they put land and stock in trust. Eventually, Mr. Hershey put all of his stock from the chocolate company into the trust for the philanthropy of the Milton Hershey School to last in perpetuity. Again, you know, we talk now in business about corporate social responsibility. The Hershey's were doing that back in 1909. And at the Milton Hershey School, everything is free to the students. And these are all students who come from poverty as well as have additional obstacles in their lives. Free medical, dental, healthcare, food, clothes, everything. Just the impact that one individual in business can have. I know, this may be a little hard to see, but I wanted you to get a concept of the organizational structure of the Hershey entities. The Hershey Trust Company is really the bank. It's trustee for the school trust and also for the MS Hershey Foundation Trust, which was set up for educational and cultural benefits to the community. The Milton Hershey School Trust, now that's the trust that has currently the $13 billion as a result of the, not only Mr. Hershey's initial gift, but also the stock appreciation and income from the Hershey Company, Hershey Entertainment and Resorts and other investments. And the trust, then, the income from the trust funds the school. So I chair the school board of managers and the Hershey Trust Company Board of Directors. And I sit on the MS Hershey Foundation Board of Managers, which is the theater and the museum and the gardens. And hopefully, if you've not made it to those, you will, because they're, they are, they make a fascinating excursion into the community benefits of the chocolate company. Any questions on that? This is probably the hardest to explain, because it's a very- Someone once said to me that this is, there's a simplicity to the complexity of it. It's an extremely complex organization where you have a trust or a nonprofit that owns majority share, controlling interest in a for-profit business. Yes, a question, great.
Isn't the Hershey Trust one of the largest trusts in America? I mean, it's even bigger than Harvard.
It is. Now, a couple of distinguishing points. The, unlike other school endowments, the, we cannot borrow. We can't, we don't charge tuition to students, so you can't raise the tuition. And we are restricted to only spending the income from the trust. So even though you have stock appreciation, that stays in the corpus and you can only spend the income. So it's, when you think about the size of it, also think about, you know, it matters to us when, when you're buying your chocolate bar, because we need the income from that in order to run the school and to make sure that we never have to send a student home because we don't have the income from it. So, absolutely right about the size. A little different in terms of what it means to run a school and to operate a school and to provide income in perpetuity. Yes?
Considering it's the largest in the country now, it has a very noble purpose to give free endowment to the children who live in Harvard, who still charge us education. How did Hershey navigate the Depression whenever a lot of people were wiped out in this division?
Yeah, I'm not the historian, but Mr. Hershey, as I said, kept building during the Depression. He kept, and maybe it, maybe it was the experience of having failed many times early in life, that it didn't, he wasn't fearful of it. And also, he wasn't, he wasn't saving money for him to live an extravagant life. He had philanthropy in mind and community in mind. So I think that owning your own business, having control of your own business, having a sense of what you want to do with it from a philanthropic standpoint, I think that may have made the difference for him. Any other questions? So as I mentioned, we serve over 2,000 students now and have a curricula that teaches vocational training as well as academics, as well as home life. Oops. Then some of the obstacles, some of the obstacles that we talked about with Amanda and others. And we're very proud of our students and what they are able to achieve and overcome despite their backgrounds. Imagine, never having seen a dentist or been to the doctor or had regular healthcare. Most of that, most of them haven't before they come to Milton Hershey School. And then the core of it is this home life, which teaches the grit and the perseverance and the persistence. Where the students live in student homes with house parents. About eight to 10 students per student home. And our house parents are terrific. Can you imagine? I have two children. I can't imagine having eight plus my own. So I'd like to acknowledge a house parent that's with us. Don is here. You know, if you get a chance after this to speak to Don, please do. I'm sure he has a lot of experiences to relate, but we really, really value what they have to teach our students. And as I said, going back to earlier, part of that is grit, and our graduates speak about grit.
My name is Tiffany Cheng-Walston. I graduated from Milton Hershey in 2007 and currently serve as the Executive Director of Governor Wolf's Advisory Commission on Asian Pacific American Affairs. So I always say that attending Milton Hershey School saved my life. You know, it definitely changed the entire course of my life. Having the relationships and the mentors that I had at Milton Hershey meant everything to me when I was a student there. They are bonds and support systems that have sustained me through college and then also after college as I was embarking on my professional career. Those of us who have the fortuitous opportunity to be able to attend Milton Hershey School and graduate from Milton Hershey School, there's something that we have, which we're calling grit, that really enables us to achieve, I think, success after Milton Hershey School. We've been through a lot of experiences that many people have never experienced. And I think when you come from that kind of background, you've been through so much that you, you know what it takes to be successful and you're, and you know where you've come and you realize that you're, you're never gonna go back. You're always gonna go forward. There's a quote, and it says, "His deeds are his monument and his life are inspiration." And I always go back to that and I think about all of the opportunities that were afforded to me. It challenges me and holds me accountable in my own life now to live a life that would be one that Milton Hershey would be proud of. When I think about my time there, I think about my friendships, my mentors, all of the staff and teachers and house parents that poured so much love and time and energy into me. I owe it to them, but more importantly, I owe it to myself to really unlock the greatness within me and achieve all that I can.
I'm looking at the clock and I see that I don't have a lot of time. I did wanna share with you my own story. At about the same time that Mr. Hershey was experiencing success at chocolate making and his chocolate company, my grandparents were migrating from the rural South to Pennsylvania, like many African-American families were at the first half of the last century. And I often think about their grit and resilience and how I am the beneficiary of that. That 100 years later, I stand here. The, and the education and economic and social advantages that I have experienced as a result of their journey, things that they never dreamed possible. I was the first, among the first generation in my family to go to college. Certainly the first to go to graduate school when I attended law school. And one of the proudest moments of my life was when my grandfather was in attendance at my graduation. And then having the opportunity for a career in law and business, to be able to follow my dreams and live them out in a very professionally fulfilling way. Yeah, I, I trace that back to my grandparents. I was, and just very quickly, when I started out in business, I was focused on, you know, problem solving and goals and deadlines. And I really didn't make that connection between life skills and business skills. I was just all about focusing on getting the job done. And I think I got it done very well. But I came to realize that there's a human side to business as well. And it's, for me, it was about developing others and encouraging others and tapping into the potential of others. So building upon those, you know, getting the foundation, getting the business mechanics and the business skills, showing the grit and the perseverance, and then what do you do with it? And for me, it was about instilling that in others. And my inspiration, you see the little girl in the middle? That's, that was my sister, who was, when she was very young, was diagnosed with a condition that severely curved her spine. And so as she grew, the condition got worse. You know, she had braces all of her life and the doctor said she wouldn't live past her teens. And she's my inspiration for grit and perseverance and for my change in leadership. And she's my inspiration for grit and perseverance and for my change in leadership. Eventually, although she had difficulty walking, she wanted to be a writer, way past when the doctor said she wouldn't live past her teens. She went to Philadelphia Community College and took courses in English and writing. So I, when I think about, again, what's that spark that I can pass on? I think of my sister. And when I'm leading teams and I'm thinking, what, how do I encourage those teams? How do I incent those teams? I think of Eleanor as being my spark. I know that we've, I've talked a lot this morning about business, but I hope as well you've gotten some of my ideas about what you need in addition to those business skills of finance and organizational change and talent management. And it's that combination of business skills and life skills that I have found have helped me to be successful. And the notion from Mr. Hershey of servant leadership. So I leave you with this final quote from Mr. Hershey. "Cooperation is the only true solution of many of our problems. Individual success depends upon success of all." I think we're just about out of time. I don't know if anyone has any questions before we break up here.
Probably could take a couple.
Okay. Any questions?
Any questions? Yeah?
How has your experiences, like, when you were younger, like, growing up, how did that, like, shape, like, as you decided that you're doing the music? And then how did that, like, change, like, what changed for you, like, deciding that when you're the law?
Okay. Well, in particular, the law always fascinated me, although I was, originally did the music route. Law fascinated me because of what was going on around me. When I grew up, it was during the civil rights era, so there was just, the lawyers were the ones that were making the difference. The lawyers were the ones that were, that you saw that were changing the laws and that were the judges and the courts and all of that. So I think just having a recognition that that was one way of making change and a route to a voice for change. And although I personally never went into that particular area of law, I did see it as, the law in general, as a place where someone could really make a difference. Thank you for your question. I appreciate it.
How about one more, one more question? Okay.
Yes.
The students at your school, are they from, do they come from all over the country, or are they from?
The students at Milton Hershey School do come from all over the country. The way that Mr. and Mrs. Hershey set up their deed of trust, they said that there needs to be a preference for students who are from the local area. So Dolphin County, Lebanon, Lancaster, there's a preference. Then the next preference is Pennsylvania, and then the rest of the country. So we have students from all over the country. As you would expect, there's a concentration, about 25% of our students are, are local. And, and then, you know, Pennsylvania as a whole, and then it spreads out. Good. Well, good luck to everyone with your business studies. I really appreciate being with you.